Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 14th, 2025 Willets City Council. We are going to have a stellar Willet City employee, Nikki Caldwell, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam Burke, could you please take the role? And Councilman Burton is out of town. He and I spoke on Monday. He's an excused absence. He's out of town.
Okay. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Present.
Stransky.
Yes.
Almane.
Present. Thank you.
The City Council welcomes input from the audience. If there is a matter of business on the agenda that you're interested in, you may address the council when this matter is considered. If you wish to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. In order for everyone to be heard, please limit your comments to three minutes per person. The Brown Act regulations do not allow action to be taken on audience comments in which the subject is not listed on the agenda. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. While the City Council welcomes public criticism of policies, procedures, programs, or services of the agency, behavior that disrupts, disturbs, impedes, or renders infeasible the orderly conduct of the meeting, and that includes but is not limited to use of profanity, slurs, yelling from the audience, threatening remarks, physically threatening conduct, or physical or verbal displays of disrespect, will not be tolerated and the individual will be removed immediately. For public communications, is there anyone that wants to get up during public communications?
Is that right?
It is.
Oh, good. Hi. Hello. Thank you. I want to... My name is Melinda Clark. I'm promised to remember to say my name this time. And I am a marriage and family therapist, and I've been here for 20 years. And right across the street from my little office is the new parking lot that I want to thank. I don't know what you guys did, but now there's parking lot lights. It's very nice across that street from me, so thank you. The other thing is, because I am a marriage and family therapist, I have been seeing the people amongst us in our town who often have a lot of anxiety and depression and worries, and they don't know about jobs, they don't know about relationships, they don't know about if there are money for childcare, you know? We all know this. There's problems. So recently, because of the Trump administration, we have even more added chaos and worry, and I am very concerned about that. It's the federal government, seems so far away, but then it's California, and then it's Mendocino County, and then it's you guys, our City Council. So I really want you to believe and understand that we need your guidance, we need your information. How is this all shaking down for us in Little Willets? There's concerns about Head Start, about the senior center. I volunteer at the food bank. They're not sure how much longer they can keep going. These are... And probably everybody in this room knows some sort of situation that's shaky right now. So I'm asking for you, I don't know, extemporaneously right now, it's probably not going to happen, but some way that you're going to respond and show your constituents here. What... How are you going to guide us? How are you going to help? It's still in the works to have Jared Huffman come here for a town hall. I'm in communication with them. We don't know yet, but I hope that will be soon. I don't know. But otherwise, how can you respond?
Sorry, you're...
Yeah, I'm done. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Public Matters, the Willet Chamber of Commerce Car and Bike Show presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm John Gavaznik with Chamber of Commerce, and Barbie Swinson.
Swinson.
What's your name? Barbie Swinson, Chamber Coordinator. And we have a little short clip that we've been using as advertisement, and then some questions and answers as far as the car show goes, if you have any.
Willet Chamber of Commerce Brown event. The 43rd Car and Bike Show. Featuring five...
There you go. We're good there.
...fire station. Step back in time, Willet's own roots, road to town, plus a bouncy castle and fun activities for the whole town. And don't forget to explore the many offerings of downtown Willets, with its unique shops and fantastic food spots, the local guest food and merchant vendors in Budsnider Park. You won't want to miss this free event in downtown Willets, Sunday, May 25th.
Very nice.
So that's what we've been promoting on the Internet and various places that we can put it up. So in the blocked-out area on the map, that's the footprint of the event. And is there any questions about it first off?
I think as we go along, there might be some questions, but if you don't mind, give us an overview of what's expected.
Well, we're starting at 8:00, shutting the street down at 8:00. And it'll take us a couple hours to get everybody organized. And 10:00, the event starts with the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have Commercial and Main blocked off with Granite Semi Truck. They're going to have a band on top of the truck. And Budsnider Park, we have a bunch of vendors that are going to be there, merchandise vendors. And then right here in the parking lot, we're going to have food vendors. Roots is bringing up some equipment. We have... How many so far? We have how many cars?
We have 90 cars registered, and I get about five or six a day, and I expect it to continue more than that.
Yeah, so last year, at... Last year, they only had 50.
Oh.
So this year, it's really with our new website and how seamless it is to check in and preregister, it's really made it easy for cars to register. And the same with our vendors. You can just go online and at visitwillets.com, and it steers you right to the event calendar where you can check in and become registered. So yeah, it's coming along pretty good. Downtown is reserved for our businesses, and the park is reserved for potential future businesses in vendors. So that's what we're hoping for.
And we have like 24 vendors, merchant vendors signed up for Budsnider Park, and we have 13 food vendors for the city parking lot right here. And we're going to re-measure and see if we can fit any more in and then potentially open it up to a couple more. We're going to have two bounce houses for the kids in the city park, and then we're going to put one over in the kids' zone. And there's going to be some activities going on, you know, the old recs.
Old kids' zone?
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Gonzalez.
As far as... Without naming now, yeah, for vendors, what kind of food selection are you going to have?
Well, we got tacos, ice cream.
Pizza.
Pizza.
Big girl.
Big girl. I mean, there's a pretty good variety. We have... We have how many ice cream selections?
We have like five.
Yep. We've got five ice cream vendors.
We're going to have the limit next year.
So we didn't realize how many ice cream vendors were going to show up, but it's pretty popular, I guess.
And roll-ins, rotation.
Roll-ins, yeah.
I know there's been a lot of discussion about the chamber and doing beer sales.
Yeah, that's off the table for now, and we appreciate the effort that was put forth for that, and we understand that it can be a little complicated. So for now, we're just going to promote our brewery, and the people who are selling alcohol will promote them. Our MC will promote that from the grandstand.
Okay.
Yeah, so thank you for the efforts that were put forth in that.
All right. Any questions? Any questions from the audience?
Does it cost to enter your car?
Yes.
Yes. And that's on the website? There's information about that yet?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And there's trophies, and there's judging, and...
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. No, we're very excited about it. I think it's going to be bigger and better than last year, and we're just looking forward to it growing every year, you know?
Wow.
And yeah.
Well, to the chamber, thank you for the effort that you're putting into this to bring more tourism into our city. Thank you.
And it's not just the chamber. I mean, it's everybody in the community that takes part in it, you know? So we can't take all the credit. It's everybody who does anything.
Good. Good. Well...
And we appreciate you opening up downtown. We've had a lot of people walk in the office and say how much they really appreciate moving it to downtown. There was no issues with their cars, and they're downtown, they have access to all the merchants. So everybody seems really happy about that.
Okay, well, we're looking forward to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you.
T-shirts. T-shirts over there. T-shirts. Yeah, t-shirts. Nice. Is there any public comments?
Or are there any phones that were left on?
Joan Whitehead has something to say.
So the next item is enactment of ordinances, which we have none. The consent calendar, the City Council considers matters listed under the consent calendar as routine. The council will take action with a single motion and a roll call move. Any... A council member may request the removal of an item from the consent calendar for separate discussion and subsequent action. The following items, as presented, are before the City Council for approval or denial. The City Council minutes of April 23rd, adoption of a resolution changing the authorized signers for the City of Willets checking account, payroll account, and safe deposit box at Savings Bank of Mendocino County. Adoption of a resolution authorizing specific city staff to transfer funds between the local agency investment fund and Savings Bank of Mendocino County. Discussion and possible grant of city consent to CalFire's proposed use of the Willets rodeo grounds as an incident base in the event of a fire emergency.
And one more.
One more. Is there one more?
Item 23.
Approve a resolution to accept 2023 payment preservation project, Project 202307, authorize a filing notice of completion. Completion project totaled $482,762.50. And I'm going to pull item D, as in David, the Willets Rodeo Grounds, because I'd like to have a discussion on that one. Is there anybody that would like to pull anything else? All right. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
With the exception of item D?
With the exception of item D.
Okay.
I'll say it.
Okay.
Hey, Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Almane?
Yes.
Almane.
Yes. Okay, so discussion of the Frontier Days. And so just to let everybody know what this is, is the... When CalFire plans ahead of time when they're going to have a fire camp, if there's going to be a good place to have a fire camp. So let's hope that we go through this calendar year without any need for a fire camp in the north part of the county. That would be the best solution. But if there is another 2018 or a 2008 where we have larger multiple fires, then CalFire basically turns a certain area into their own Fire... CalFire City, and that's where they run all of their operations. And in the past, they've utilized Frontier Days as their fire camp when they have the need for it. The property of Frontier Days is very unique. The property is technically owned by the City of Willets, but it's leased to Frontier Days. And Frontier Days is a group, a large group of very, very dedicated employees who maintain it. They raise money for it. Just to let you know, their power, their PG&E power is about $1,000 a month, and they do this. They make sure that Frontier Days goes without a hitch, no pun intended. And just like the Chamber of Commerce and the car show, Frontier Days also brings a lot of revenue into the city of Willets for hotels and gas stations and restaurants and everything. Frontier Days is probably our biggest tourism 10-day block that the city of Willets has.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
They're not employees, they're volunteers.
Well, did I say employees?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Volunteers, volunteers, volunteers. I'm sorry. No, I know.
You were wondering if the check was happening.
Yeah, no. I'm... In my mind, I was going volunteers, because I'm always impressed with the amount of volunteerism. And you see it now when they're out there weed-eating right now and mowing and repairing the fences and getting everything ready for our entertainment on Frontier Days. And so it's a very unique situation because CalFire basically prepares contracts ahead of time, so if there is a need for a fire camp, they don't have to go through the business process of securing the location and going through the paperwork. And so CalFire has approached Frontier Days in the city and said, "We would like to pre-contract," not paying anything yet, "but we would like to pre-contract for Frontier Property, Frontier Days property." And so, of course, you know, it wouldn't be during Frontier Days because it's being used for Frontier Days during that. But there is a need for CalFire to use this, and in the past, people have said, "Yes, CalFire, we're not going to charge." And CalFire actually says, "No, we have to charge." They pay money for the purpose of this, and it's a considerable chunk of money. It's $2,500 per day. And so there is several discussion that our city attorney has talked to Frontier Days representatives on, on how this would be distributed. And one discussion was basically split it down the middle, right? Was that one?
That was a suggestion by me.
Suggestion of split it down the middle, which is, I mean, that's a fair thing to do. And what I'd like for the council to do is talk about this. I know I have my recommendation, or my thoughts on it, but I'd love to hear from the council and from everybody on what we'd like to do. Jared?
Well, it was my understanding that in the past, we have split it, but we've used the money as kind of in trust so that it would go towards benefiting, improving the area there. And that was... Am I wrong in that that has been the intent that we've done in the past, but we've...
I'm not sure how the money's been... Perhaps Marcy Berry could give some light on this. I know that in the past, Frontier Days has contracted with CalFire for the use of the space as an incident base. I'm not sure how the money's been divided.
I mean, I was under the understanding that some of the money that we received on our end, the city end, not Frontier Days, and maybe, Marcy, you could correct me if I'm wrong, that the purpose with the city's portion wasn't to throw in the general fund, but to put it kind of in a trust to use for the benefit of that area.
And I haven't looked specifically at the budget for that. I'm somewhat familiar with the budget. I haven't seen anything like that, so maybe...
Because I'd support that. That way, we can... When we have to do repairs or whatever, then we've got money set aside for it.
Well, our financial director is here.
So currently, we don't have anything in the budget in order to be able to cover the cost or cover receiving any funding from Frontier Days. But we can have that.
Would you like to weigh in, Larry?
I'd like it for them to come to us and start this sooner, and hopefully, we'll never have to use it.
I get it. Anything?
I just want to echo all those sentiments. I hope they never have to use it. You did say earlier that it was not going to take place. They couldn't use that during the...
Frontier Days.
Frontier Days.
Right.
That's part of the agreement?
Right.
You didn't say that? Okay. That's a concern.
Well, then, let me weigh in and tell you. Frontier Days is a very, very respected organization in the city, and the volunteerism is very high. And the volunteers who volunteer for Frontier Days, surprisingly enough, are usually involved with many other volunteer organizations in our city. I mean, it's a group of really dedicated people. And while splitting the money 50/50 does seem like initially, my first blush at it was, "Yeah, that's fair." Then I started looking at the amount of money that Frontier Days puts in the fencing and the electricity and so forth. And so my recommendation is, and this is not an action item, it's not a... We don't have an agenda action item on it.
But well, we are. We're...
Well, then, my thought is that the fire camps obviously sometimes run two weeks, sometimes run a month. We don't know. You know, hopefully, they don't... They run zero days, but if they run, then they're doing it. And since Frontier Days themselves puts out a considerable amount of money to maintain and keep the property as it is, weed-free and so forth, I'm thinking the first 10 days of the contract could go to Frontier Days, and any time after that, we could split it with the city. And so there's liability involved, there's insurance involved, there's many things involved. And it's just an idea that I'm thinking of, and I'd sure love to hear any other ideas.
Well, again, I just like the idea of us dedicating money so that there's money in the budget so that if there's something we need to contribute, we're not having to search general fund or whatever that we...
So if anybody would like to make a motion on that, it'd be great, and we could say when the city gets theirs, you know, if they get theirs, then that money can be set aside for...
The betterment of that area.
Right?
Because we draw... I mean, we end up getting the benefit of when Frontier Days has their event, it benefits the whole city. I just don't want to be in a situation where, hey, we need to do something on the city end.
I get it.
We have money set aside in the trust or a fund. That way, it's not like we have to go in and take park money for that. We have a set aside fund that we can build for doing that. That's what I envision. And that way, that's what I envision our half being, or any costs associated with that, is what I see.
It'd be relatively easy to set up a reserve account.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that way, we can track it for the public, and same thing. I mean, Frontier Days gets the benefit of it's going back towards you, it's not going to fund, you know, whatever, the dog park, it's going there, you know? But it's for the betterment of that area, for the rec room area, or anything that concerns the Frontier Days, or, you know, the bathrooms there, or whatever we need.
Okay. Any comment?
No, I agree with your sentiment here and there. First 10 days should go straight to Willet Frontier Days, and then after that, 50/50, as long as the 50/50 includes what Gary's talking about, which is that we'll have us up a trust, and we just need to make a motion in that direction.
Good motion.
Jim, you look like you have something.
Well, I just... I thought maybe Walter could enlighten the council on what types of efforts the city takes with respect to the property, and what kind of maintenance and repair obligations fall on the city, and whether or not that's substantial or insubstantial during the course of the year.
That was something we started discussing last year about some of the soccer fields and the usage. We contribute some, we work on some of the plumbing, some of the irrigation controls and things like that. There's been breaks in pipes that we take care of. They take care of the buildings and everything. When there was damage recently, a couple years ago, storm damage to the Margarita Hut, that went out to public bid, and that was taken care of through the city and everything, the repairs and our insurance company and everything like that. Typically, they work on the general maintenance and daily stuff there. On the electricity, we just have to find out about... I thought the city was paying the electricity and the water and everything, and we're not...
Not the electricity anymore?
Not anymore? Okay, okay.
It was only one, but we found two meters that we've been paying.
Okay, 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 okay.
I'm aware of them, Walter, because that's where we were not aware of those numbers.
Oh, okay. No, that's fine. I knew there was some question about that.
We do have a question about one of the meters that is charging $1,000 a month that has...
An electrical meter?
Yeah, we don't know. Marcy probably has more. We are electricity bill in the wintertime.
Yeah.
Nobody's down there. We're paying $1,000 to $1,200 with all of our meters, so we don't know. We're just paying the bill. We don't know if it's running streetlights. It was just brought to our attention that the city was paying electricity for the rodeo grounds that we were not aware of. We just said, "Let's not have a problem, we'll pay the bill."
Okay.
So we put it under ours.
We can check about that, check that meter, try to find out what it's actually going to.
Yeah, I don't know. There's five meters down there.
Okay.
So I think three are by the cook shack.
Okay, we can look into that and see, because that'd be good to know for everyone where that's going. Okay.
Great, yeah.
So not necessarily substantial or insubstantial, just integrated in some...
Yeah, I mean, there's times when we get in there and do help with some things, but most of the time, they're handling the general day-to-day maintenance. We handle the infrastructure of water and such and everything, yeah.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, again, I just think that you're talking about the first 10 days, and a typical event is usually about two weeks or whatever. And so I'm just thinking that, again, I'm not talking about taking the money from Frontier Days as much as putting it in a trust that then we could use for that area, because if it's just 10 days and then the incident's over, then the city end of it, you know, for any costs that we may incur down there to help out, that fund will never get funded with just the 10 days.
I guess.
Oh, okay. I think I probably misunderstood what you were saying previously.
Yeah.
No, what you're suggesting is that we actually just take both halves and put it back, the whole thing into a trust for both of us.
No, no, no. We can give them their half. Our... You know, we take what we get.
Right.
It goes... And what happens is that the city end of it goes into a trust account that's just used exclusively for the betterment of that area so that we're not having to touch general fund monies for that. And then Frontier Days gets the other half, and then we just track it so that, you know, Frontier Days comes in and says, "Hey, what did you guys spend it?" "Hey, it's at a meeting here, it's being spent, but I just want it set aside so that, you know, we track it that way."
If we include that into our motion, would you be okay with the 10 days, or would you rather just do...
I'd rather just do 50/50 and then track it, because it's going to be tracked in such a way that...
Okay.
Again, it's not... Because most incidents are going to be two weeks or something like that, at the most, I've seen them. And so that's your 10 days, so that never... That half would never grow.
Larry?
I like the 10 days for all of the... For Frontier Days to have that much money for 10 days, and then it be split between us for equal from the city, and because they have a lot of things that go on there and money that I think should be spent... Frontier Days should have the money spent the way they want to spend it, and that would be my thought, and that's a recommendation I would make, the 10 days, and then after that, you know, split 50/50.
Well, we have a missing councilperson tonight, so I'm predicting a two-to-two vote on this one. And I agree with you, Larry. I know there are some other expenses that are incurred during Frontier Days, and traffic control on East Commercial is very important. You know, slowing cars down on East Commercial requires... The police department requires signage. I don't think that there's any private traffic people here. Chief, maybe you could weigh in. Are there any significant costs that Frontier Days creates for the city that are not... That are outside of your budget?
The only thing that really comes to mind is police overtime.
Right.
But it's in the budget.
Okay, all right. Would Frontier Days like to weigh in?
Hi, Marcy. There's more to it than just what happens, and just like Tom said, all year round, there's still stuff that has to be done down there. Just because it's not the two weeks of Frontier Days means that nothing happens down there. We're still down there. We fixed the water leaks, but what Walter's bringing up, it's a pipe that comes from your...
Water park.[1704.16]
your, what's it called, water station?
Yeah.
The water station. It goes through the carnival grounds, through our grounds to do the park. Well, when that breaks, that, that is not our water line. It is the city's. So they have to come in and fix it. And the city is aware that that is a very old pipe. Kenan, that was helping us at one time, there was talk that we would replace that line, and we would help replace that, because it does need to get done. The big statue of Willie has almost fell over twice, because that pipe has broken. And it's not just a little bit of water that's leaking, it's gushing water, and it makes holes underneath. So, and there's just a lot more costs than just Frontier Days happening.
Oh, no, and I get that, Marcy. I think that whatever we're causing as a city down there, we should be fixing, independent of...
We want to share that we've never asked the city, we always want to take and help. The fence got cut last time when there was, the fire department was there, set up CalFire, and we had to replace a fencing. So the money, it was $12,000. I think, if I remember right, $4,500 of it went to fix that fence. So it's really not about the money, it's about protecting our town. And that's how we felt about it. We didn't come up with that amount. Actually, I believe it was Kathy that came up with the amount when we very first started years ago. And they asked if we wanted more money, and we didn't ask for more money, we just want our town safe. But if there's damages, they have to be fixed, so there has to be some kind of money. So, and it's not that we don't want to share, but as Tom said, the 10 days, if there is something broken, that's what we can use to fix it. Unless we write into the contract maybe that they have to fix any damages, I don't know. We've never really...
Well, I would think that if CalFire comes in and breaks something, I mean, it's a state, they need to fix it, just like...
We just fixed the fence. We didn't care, we just wanted it fixed.
I mean, from the city end of it, I think we should be doing our part too down there. So if it's our water line is causing Willie to tip over, we need to get it fixed.
They came down and fixed it. Like, we just have to call them and say, hey, this is happening. And we have...
My only thing is, I just want to make sure whatever money we collect for whatever, whether it's the state, or the feds decide to come down and use it with that, that then we just need to keep track of it so that we can use it for the betterment of Frontier Days.
And it's all, and you can pull the records, just so you know, you can do a public records request. And that's how, I mean, I think the city has done that before, to see that we got $12,000. So we don't care one way or another.
Okay. All right, so where are we here? Who, is it your motion?
Would you be okay with 10 days?
Is there anybody else?
You know what, I'll go.
Hold on, Dan wants to talk.
Dan Laughton. What's the alternate location? If you don't want them going in on June 1st...
Well, that's up to CalFire, not up to us.
But what would their alternate, there would be about a six-week period where they wouldn't be able to go in. I'd say from the 1st of June until after Frontier Days is open.
Yeah. Wait, Marcy has the answer.
If there's an emergency, we're not having Frontier Days if our town's on fire. We're going to say, come set up, and put the fires. I mean, we're not going to tell them they can't use the grounds because there's, our town's on fire.
Well, it wouldn't necessarily be the town, it could be outside of the town, where there's...
Right now, also, CalFire has approached us about using our airport for air operations and some ground operations, but it's limited. That one, we're entering a contract with them for $1,000 a day, because we don't have jet fuel there, and they have to contract out with Brook Trails for water. So it's not as big a base that would be used as the fairgrounds, as the rodeo grounds, but it would be a limited usage up there, and they're contracting those. That's currently, right now, we're working on that.
As long as there's an alternate location for that six-week period.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they use the high school also.
Yeah.
Helen.
Helen Sims. I'd like to note if the, if the contract for leasing the property to Frontier Days allows for Frontier Days to subcontract to anybody they want.
It's my understanding they do.
Yes.
The lease. The lease, right. The city's lease with Frontier Days provides that Willis Frontier Days shall not sublet or allow others to use the facility without the prior written permission from the city, which permission shall not be unreasonably withheld. So if the city has a reasonable reason for qualifying the use or denying the use, it may, it may do so, but...
Okay, and this is certainly a good use for it. That's what, yeah, thank you.
Good question, thank you. Is there anybody else who has a comment or question? Okay, so who wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, go.
It's going to be wordy. I'd like to make a motion to approve the attached resolution approving CalFire's proposal to use the Willis Rodeo Ground as an incident base in the event of a local emergency wildfire event, on the condition that any payments made by CalFire shall go to the Willis Frontier Days organization for the first 10 days, and then split 50/50 with the city for every day after that. Additionally, and specifically, the city will create a separate account for the Willis Frontier Day related repairs, as well as recommend that the interim manager provide notice of such conditional approval to both CalFire and the Willis Frontier Day.
Can I have that?
I literally just made that up.
I'll give it back to you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, can I have a suggestion? Since you're making it too specific to the interim manager, how about just that the city manager, because this way, if this continues year after year, we're not having to change it.
Additionally, specifically, the city will create a separate account for the Willis Frontier Days related repairs, and it is recommended that our manager provide notice of such conditional approval to both CalFire and to the Willis Frontier Days.
All right, so that's a motion. Larry second. Larry second.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Almane?
Yes.
Alman.
Yes. Thank you, and thanks for the comment. You're welcome. Okay, moving on past the consent calendar.
The next item is, we got the monthly activity reports, accounts payable activity report, building permit activity report, and business license activity report, all for April 2025, and those are in the packet. Commissions, agencies, and authorities, there are none. City manager reports or recommendations. Do you have anything you wanted to...
This is from sort of my third week. I would just like to say that I've, I've had a very enjoyable first few weeks, and a lot of good meetings and positive experiences with the current city team. It's been very pleasant, and I appreciate the warm welcome. I had a good, good talk with Marcy today about how the city can partner with Frontier Days, more to support the biggest event for the city, obviously. Car Show looks like it's going to be competing with 90-plus cars, but overall, I would just say I appreciate, I appreciate everyone, and look forward to however long I get to be in this position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment? Department recommendations, approval of a resolution authorizing the Willis Chamber of Commerce car and bike show and road closures for May 25th. Presenting staff member is Connor Stack.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Here basically presenting once again what John earlier came up to discuss with the Willis Car and Bike Show, but this time specifically talking about the resolution that you guys can take to open up both, oh, sorry, to do these road closures on Main Street and Commercial Street officially. So the title being approver of a resolution authorizing the Willis Chamber of Commerce car and bike show and road closures for May 25th. So this map in particular, let's see if we can pop it up, so if you guys have any questions or comments what we're looking at, we can bring it up for you. I, ever since about eight or nine months ago, I've been working with John to sort of slowly create versions of this new sort of street closure for the city. It's relatively new for both the closure of Main Street and Commercial Street. At the same time for this law, we have a similar closure during parades. But this closure of Commercial Street and Main Street for this period of time is unique for this length. So we wanted to make sure it was well-vetted by everybody, so that it was a good model to be able to use in the future, if we ever wanted to use such a closure again.
I have a question.
Go.
When you have the car show and you close Commercial Street, where are you going to allow volunteer fire people that possibly would come and interrupt it? They have, have a corridor that they can go down to get to it?
100%. So this map in particular was made and finalized with a technical advisory committee, including, that we actually did at the fire station across the street, where all of them took a peek at it, as well as facilities and services, multiple folks from planning, John, representatives from the Chamber of Commerce were there to approve it. And part of those regulations to make way for fire are mandatory 20-foot lanes in the middle throughout the car show, so that fire can pull through, as well as no parking, as you can see in front of the fire station on South Humboldt, so that there's already no parking in red on the firefighter side, but then no parking on the border as well at Buzz Center Park, to make sure that they can pull out and not get sort of stuck there. In addition, if anything happens where they need emergency access during the car show, all of those black and basically shut down to public traffic will be available with a 20-foot buffer, so that a fire truck can pull down and get where they need to go.
And they can go both ways.
Yes.
What are the numbers? 1, 2, 4?
So up and coming to the event, those are the numbers for volunteers. So as part of the encroachment permit with this, there's going to be signups for the volunteers that are going to be basically at those checkpoints. So as you can see, marked by the orange, that is the primary detour route. And so we have mandatory volunteer numbers during the hours of the event, to be able to assist in directing traffic down the detour route. And so those are marked, those that are agreed to by fire. As it gets closer to the event, and starting to sort of volunteers with sort of what they're doing, and how the signage is going to be set up all over, I'm actually going to assist with that as well during the meeting on, I believe it is the 20th next week, to make sure that everything goes smoothly, because this entire setup's being done by volunteers. And so the 1 and 2, as well as all the little squares, are all different signage with the direction that the signage is faced, so that volunteers can take a look at this map and know where stuff needs to be, where stuff needs to be placed, with no confusion.
So this is to the chief. When we close down streets like this, obviously, we have to have notification ahead of time, so people don't leave their cars on the weekend, you know, here, and then the police department ends up having to tow them, and people end up arguing about the tow bill and so forth. The vehicle code section, the 21101A that we're all familiar with, is that the one that, is the police department going to be doing the posting, the legal posting, to make sure that the street's going to be clear? So that morning, when the chamber shows up, there are no streets, there are no car parks?
Might be able to answer this.
Go.
So John, the Chamber of Commerce has already put out notices of intent around businesses and residences, so we know what's going on with the closure. And in addition, we have the no parking signs prepared to give to the Chamber of Commerce, to be able to disperse tomorrow, as soon as you guys sign the resolution to close it down, which are required at least 72 hours beforehand, to be placed in the areas where the no parking is marked on the detour map, so that none of these spaces have cars beforehand. And that 72-hour mark is also to be placed, so that if cars are, can't be parked there, they can be towed in the correct time?
Correct. So yes, Mayor, they would be able to tow cars, but obviously, there would be plenty of warnings, so it won't really happen, but the authority would be there. And since I'm talking now, access to the police department's called out there, so I'm comfortable that there still is access to the police department. People can, most people call the police department, but some people do come in in the lobby. There is access to the police department, outside of the police department, because they have the community service officers, and they have the pop-up tent with the table, and plus we'll have the police officers on the ground, so the police department will be accessible.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll vote on it. I really appreciate how you're prepared for tonight's talk and answer this question. Thank you very much.
We've been working on it for a while, so at the last minute, we were sure that there'd be no problems, it could go smoothly.
I get it. That was to you, because you're a city employee, and you're very well-prepared, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, so any public comment?
I just want to say that we appreciate all the work that Connor's done. He's done a great job. Thank you.
All right.
Is this the first time that commercial will be closed down?
Except for the parade.
Yeah, but the commercial's never closed till the parade, for one hour. You line up on this, and then we have an hour to get to the parade then, but we don't close commercials.
Right. This is the answer question.
It would be the first time that commercial's closed.
Okay, any other comments, public? All right, any comments from the council? Anybody like to make a resolution or make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we support this resolution. I think I talked to Dolores and Jim about the...
Yeah, the vehicle code section is not quite right. It's subsection E rather than A. Oh, okay. Good catch, Mr. Attorney. No, no, that was entirely Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Well, and I would like, you know, as part of this, I'm making that motion, but also I know that it references this, we can do it by resolution, or we can also, in a plan for a ordinance in the future, would make it easier for Frontier Days or for, for any other group that wants to do this. So it's a lot easier than having to do a resolution in the future.
Oh, I see, okay.
There's a way to where we can have an ordinance. Some cities actually have an ordinance to where you, it's basically done where you approach the city staff, and unless it's something really out of whack, that they bring to council, that for something like this, it's every year, Frontier Days every year, it's just, since we now control the street.
We can try to get government out of it, but for night, for tonight, we have this motion.
Do we have a first? Do we have a second?
Nope, we need a second.
There's no second.
Oh, may I second?
And you're seconding with a correction from A to E?
Correct.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Almane?
Yes.
Alman.
Yes. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah. And thank you, Connor. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. The next item is discussion of future applications for funding under the Community Development Block Grant Program. Presenting staff member is Dusty Dooley, Community Development Director. Dolores, are you here?
Yeah, and also get Jeff, the person who knows what he's talking about on this item.
And this is just a discussion, no action item?
Yeah, informational item, no formal action.
Is he on?
I don't think he's logged in yet. Okay, you might get a request in as I'm going through the presentation. And there's just a free PowerPoint that we have too, to help guide the presentation.
Should you text him? Does he know that?
I did just shoot him a text, yeah. And I talked to him earlier today.
Okay.
If Jeff's not able to join us, I'll pretend like I know him.
When you talked to me about today, you knew what you were talking about, so...
Yeah.
Both of them did.
There you go.
Recording, it's recording. I don't know what this is.
Oh, interesting. All right. So Dusty Dooley, Community Development Director. This is, again, informational item, so no formal action requested. But we are presenting the upcoming grant opportunity. We do have some ideas, so certainly I would like to use this opportunity to confirm if staff's on the right track with some of the ideas we developed under this funding opportunity. So the...
It's not there.
The community development... The Community Development Block Grant Program is administered by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. There you've got admit right there. I'm going to just stop talking if we just can't get to it.
Can't get to it over there.
Well, hit enter, Chris. Just try to hit.
It's not giving me.
Since admit is blue, if you hit enter on your keyboard, would it? Nope, okay.
I don't know why it's not.
Letting you move over. There we are. Okay. Service says? There he is.
There is Jeff. Can you hear me, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we just started, so you're right on time.
Thank you, Dolores.
Do you need me to share the screen so that you can see what you're doing?
Uh, no, not necessarily. I think he's got a copy. I just, I guess, need to be brought into full screen so that I can go through the slides here.
That's going to show you one of these.
Yeah. We're good, Dolores. Thank you very much. Couldn't have got here without you. Probably see that. So as I was saying, the Community Development Block Grant is administered by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. It's a funding source that represents a wide variety of prospective community improvements, anything from as grand as to establishing a community center for Willets down to, you know, ADA improvements for a bathroom in the park. So on this slide, it talks about the different categories of eligible activities under this program, code enforcement and facade improvements. So for instance, if the council and the community wanted to seek funding to support improving the facades along Main Street and along, you know, South, South Main Street, South Willets, if we had some blighted properties that needed to be secured, we could obtain funding under the code enforcement to do those types of activities. Housing rehabilitation, that's actually something that we use existing grant funds and we've created a housing rehab program. We're looking to fund another round of applications here soon for that. Again, I talked about ADA improvements to public facilities, could be senior centers, then improvements to public facilities such as City Hall, the library. We're going to be talking later about the Grange. You have economic development, you have micro enterprise assistance for businesses where you have less than five employees, I believe, and that could be, you know, technical assistance with helping with website development or business plans, those types of activity. That's something that actually EDFC is quite good at and does provide that level of technical assistance. And then planning and strategies related to housing facilities and economic development. So again, there's a wide variety of opportunities under this funding program. Everything has to fit under these three national objectives. And I do want to note that the city was successful in obtaining funds through this program a couple of years ago. We created a business assistance program and was able to provide about half a million dollars to local businesses. And within three months, we were able to forgive those loans completely. So we were able essentially to hand out those funds to the community and that certainly was one of the more rewarding moments in my career in public service. And this is also relevant because there's an opportunity to reestablish this program under this, the next round of funding. So we anticipate, we're a little bit ahead of the game right now, but that's a good thing and maybe a necessary thing because this is quite competitive and there's a lot of jurisdictions throughout the state. All of them are eligible to apply and there is a limited amount of funding. We anticipate the notice of funding opportunity being released in June of this year. We are eligible to request up to 3.5 million. We can apply for up to two different activities. Up to 1.5 million can be used for economic development, housing code enforcement, and up to 3.2 million for public facilities and infrastructure. So staff, although we are absolutely here to hear ideas on a variety of different improvements that we may seek either under this round or under future rounds of funding under this program, we certainly have a couple of ideas that we've already received from our communities. So a variety of businesses are still struggling and we didn't have any issue with giving away the about half a million dollars last time. And so there's again an opportunity to seek 1.5 million dollars to support businesses and create this forgivable loan program again. I do have a note that we may want to consider reserving a portion of those funds to support new and upcoming businesses and maybe use that as leverage to fill some and activate some of the vacant commercial spaces that we do have, at least those ones that are relatively turnkey ready as far as their building condition. And then we also have a request from the Willets Grange. They are in bad need of a new roof and they, because they are nonprofit, because they house a lot of nonprofits, Public Radio, Nostalgia Alleanza, because they provide an avenue for various fundraising events, they have a commercial kitchen that serves as a key incubator for a number of food businesses. Working with Jeff, I'll introduce here in a second a little bit more, give him his proper introduction. We do feel like both these applications would be quite competitive and we are in a position to put our best foot forward with these two specific applications. I also want to note that on May 27th, we'll be having a community meeting here at City Hall to garner further community input and again, get our applications ready. So while no formal actions being requested tonight, we do want to hear from council and the community if these are two worthy avenues to pursue or if we want to explore getting to other ideas. And I will note that this program is absolutely the trickiest funding source and I would not recommend that the city play in this sandbox if we didn't have Jeff Lucas and his team with CDS on board to help us. They assisted us with the obtaining the funding and doing the underwriting for the forgivable loans that were created for the other program. We're using them for our housing rehab program. And again, there's just, the nice way to say is that it's a tricky program. So, and the other good thing is, is that while I am recommending the need for third-party services to support this, if we get the grant, they will pay for, for those third-party services as well. And this is just the slides to remind me that I've been talking. So we have Jeff Lucas on the, with us tonight. He is absolutely a great resource to ask any questions that you may have. And then I see that the chambers in the audience as well as representatives from the Grange and they may want to speak to this as well.
I was just saying, if you were to ask Dusty for the questions, that's okay. Thanks for the introduction. We do think the business loan program worked out pretty well. I think we helped a lot of businesses during the COVID period stay in business and retain jobs. That's really what the program is all about. I do want to also comment that this, we anticipate that the state will notice everyone that the funds will be available, but they're federal funds and right now it's, the Community Development Block Grant Program is sort of, it's, the administration has not included it in their budget, but I have a feeling there'll be some negotiations on that. So there may be, first off, there may be a delay in this schedule, but we haven't heard one way or the other from the state, so we're kind of proceeding with what they told us. The two projects that have been discussed so far include the business loan program. The loans, after a period of time, depending on whether the business has created new jobs or retained, it's a good job, it is forgiven after a period of time. And that can be determined by, by the community and by the council, of course, if it chooses to go that way. And the other project is the Grange Hall, which also because of the community benefits that it offers and the facility needs a new roof, that is also an eligible activity. So both those, both those, the program and the project would be, would be competitive projects, grant for us to apply. Should the council determine that's the way they want to go, but there are the things you can do with the money and happy to answer any questions you may have.
May I ask a question? Certainly ask questions. To Jeff or Dusty?
I have a question for Jeff or maybe Dusty. Can you hear us okay? All right. My question is, in this kind of grant, is it better just to have 10 different ones and put them all out there and hope one or two lands or is having more kind of against us? Does it look like we're just desperate? Is there, do we want to just put as many things as possible out there or do we want to spend the city's focus on, say, two or three that are really likely and are just ones we want to focus on?
That's a good question and the state's designed the application so that you can really only are provided the opportunity to apply for like two different activities. And that's the way they structured it so that in this case, two, for the examples that we're talking about right now would be, one would be the Grange Hall roof repair and that's what they call a community facilities in the way they categorize these things. And the other would be the business assistance, the loan program, and that's economic development. So you could apply for up to, based on the way they did it, they've been doing it in the last few years, 1.5 million for each of those activities and that would pretty much utilize your full allocation. They allocate the funds at about three, three out, depending on how much they have, to each jurisdiction, but it's a competitive deal. You're competing against all the other small cities in California. And so you really kind of want to focus on the most beneficial projects and programs that have the highest chance, of course, of success.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. We're in the process of soliciting ideas now and I think it's important as we solicit ideas that the public knows that there's a trade-off, that we're going to have to decide which, which are the most critical for this fund to utilize. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Dusty, on this before, we had a section that on, for people that were low-income people to fix their houses up. Isn't this the same thing that we did and gave a certain amount of money to them to do this, to fix their roofs or whatever that they needed to do if they didn't have any money? I thought that was really a good part of it.
Yeah, you're correct, Councilmember Stransky. We've used, we have existing funds and we've created the housing rehabilitation program and it is moderate and low-income property owners, homeowners are eligible to use that. So we have funds and we have that program created, but absolutely, I believe it's true that we get two darts and one of those darts could be for further funding that program.
Okay, thank you.
Just one little bit more on that. The debt program that we're operating now, the city is operating now is funded through a state program. It's called the PLHA program. It's not this funding source, the block grant program, but it's very, very similar. You can do very, very much the same kinds of things with both programs.
Here. I guess a question for Jeff or Dusty. So let's say we open this up to the public later on and we get 10 ideas. Would it be Jeff help you vet, you know, these ideas or, I mean, I'm assuming you're not going to come to the council with, these are 10 ideas, but Jeff's helped us weed them down to these are three good ideas.
Yeah.
You know, is that the process?
Yeah, I mean, we will hold these ongoing community meetings. We will be back in front of council requesting approval to submit whatever applications we end up with. And, and yeah, as we hear ideas, we'll be vetting them and absolutely Jeff's an expert here and we'll be relying on his knowledge.
So he'd help us score them then?
Well, one, to even determine if they're eligible and then yeah, to give our recommendation as far as if we think they're going to, how competitive they're going to be or, you know, the amount of work that we would need to put forward in time to put our best foot forward under that idea. All of that would go into play in coming up with some final recommendations. And those ideas that we gather that even though if they're not part of the two darts we throw at the board this time, that doesn't mean they can't be something we start prepping for, for future years of funding cycles.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Are there any questions or comments from the public?
I just wondering, the business programs, are these going to be available for startup companies where they can come and present their business plan and we can give them a loan because we need to energize the economy in town? So I was wondering, or just nonprofit organization? I mean, the previous program worked really well, but I just, when I hear the word business programs, I would like to offer this to entrepreneur, people who wants to open a business, re-energize their economy or a current business. I mean, there is definition for a business where they need to submit the business plan, accounts receivable and payable, and then they need a loan to re-energize their current business. That's what I would like to steer this idea.
Well, this isn't, this isn't like Shark Tank, but, but this is a program where forgivable loans would be able to help them for partial of their rent, help set up their web design, help with employees at the beginning of their business and so forth. So the answer is yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Did I answer that correctly, Dusty? Good job, Mayor. Okay. Any other questions or comments? John?
Thank you. John Kavaznikov. I know the previous grant program really benefited a lot of businesses downtown. That forgivable loan thing helped people keep their doors open, helped some businesses survive during some really hard times. And I know that if that were to be implemented again, it would have the same effect. I know right now there's a, there's a big hole in our economy in Willets and nobody seems to know how to fill it. And that money would really come in handy to help businesses that are downtown, uptown, in the city limits, you know, pay the rent. I talked to people this winter where they had to decide whether or not to heat their business or pay the rent, you know? That's how hard they struggled this, this winter. So a grant program like this would be really amazing for the community again, a forgivable loan.
Thank you. Well, you know, we've only talked about the Grange through the PowerPoint presentation, but in a disaster, in a, in any kind of emergency, the Grange would be the hub of Willets with a kitchen that we have and a room, the old Willet School that Lee Persico graduated from. Throw that in there. But the Grange, if you want to give a presentation, I don't think you're going to find anybody objecting to listing the Grange as a possible recipient.
My name is Richard Jurgensen. Willets has been my home since 1979. And good evening, Mayor and City Council members and staff. I've been a Grange member. I've been a Grange member for the last 20 years. And prior to that, I had attended many events, as we all probably have, at that 100-year-old facility. Several years ago, we were doing a plumbing repair underneath the building, and we discovered the dreaded asbestos. And so, we took the $125,000 that we had set aside for a roof replacement, and we did a remediation, we did a cleanup. And so, that kind of flattened out our roof replacement. And we originally wanted to put a metal roof up, but it was prohibitive 20 years ago when we replaced it with asphalt shingles. And so, now, we would really like to put a permanent roof on it, a metal roof, and that would carry us into the future. As you mentioned earlier, we do have a commercial kitchen, which is a business incubator, and is helping a lot of young startup farmers package and get to market their produce. And we host candidates' nights, and town hall meetings, and community musicals, and lifeline screenings, and films, and Willets winter farmers' market. When we had money in our larder, we used to support the Willet Silver Grad, Willis Charter and Elementary Schools, Brookside Garden, Waldorf, Willet Senior Center, Willis Food Bank, 4H FFA, Boys and Girl Scouts, Good Farm Fund, Brook Trails, and Willet's Fire Departments, Toys for Tots, and on and on. And as mentioned earlier, we do have three rooms to the Hispanic community, Nuextra Alianza. And we have gymnastics classes going on there, karate, KLLG Hometown Radio, as well as KCYX Satellite Studio here in Willets. We have a wellness clinic, photography studio, and we have just started a seed and herb demonstration garden at the south end of the building. And so, we are in close contact with California Shake &amp; Shingle, who is the supplier to all of the roofers in Northern California. They've taken a partial interest in our project and would love to work with us. We have several quotes from local roofing contractors, and all of their quotes came in within about $20,000, which is pretty interesting. But once we tear into the project, we may find out that we need to replace some of the wood sheathing. It is an old building. But it was meant to last a long time, and it's lasted 100 years. The walls are 16 inches thick masonry with rebar reinforcement. So, it's really well-constructed, full-dimensional timber in the roof and the attic. And it's a, it's a great facility, and we just want to take it into the future. And we need some help.
Thanks, Richard. Like I said, you're not going to find anybody who's going to oppose it. We're just hoping that between Jeff and Dusty, they can put together the right paperwork grant, and come back towards us after the community meetings, and we can submit it. So, Dolores?
My name is Robert Smith. I'm currently the president at the Little Lake Grange. And I just wanted to say that, it does hurt me to say this, but we've struggled to be able to donate to the community because we are also worried about our roof. And this would give us an opportunity to continue to be that staple in the community. And I think that it would be a great thing if the city was, was like to help us through, get through our new roof. And like I said, so that we can continue the good work of the Grange in the community.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yes?
I just wanted to add that we put on a community breakfast every month.
I thought we were going to go through the whole thing without using the word pancake, I gotta say. Anybody else? All right, so this is just information only, and I guess what we are hearing from the council is full steam ahead. And Jeff, thank you for being such a hero for Willets and helping Dusty so much. Thank you. All right. Moving on.
City Council announcements, communications, and reports? There are none? Does the council have anything to report on their meetings?
I don't really have anything to report on prior meetings, but I do have a, I can't say it loud enough, but I do have Redwood Region meeting in Lakeport or Cal City this Friday. And that'll be at 1:00 for the legislative report and 3:00 for the general meeting. And I'll be responding there.
Anything to report?
Yeah, the MTA usually has their meetings fourth week of April, but this month it was canceled, so, you report.
Well, I'll report that Councilman Allen Lees and I are on the Food Truck Ad-Hoc Committee, a position I never thought I'd find myself on. And we're making progress, and I certainly appreciate the city planning team working with us. And we'll be having a stakeholder meeting, that's funny, stakeholder and food truck. A stakeholder meeting in the, in the next three weeks, I believe. Notice is going to, going out to discuss the possibility of Snyder Park. And let me, let me tell you what we're discussing right now, just so, there's, there's, there's going to be feelings on this, everybody's going to have their own opinion on it. And we don't know what we don't know. We don't even know if there will be enough food trucks, we even make a food truck ordinance, you know, worthwhile, of spending a lot of time. Or we don't know if there's going to be eight food trucks here. We also know that there's restaurants down here that pay taxes for their brick-and-mortar locations that need to stay open year-round, you know, not just on sunny summer afternoons. And so, there is discussion right now of doing a six-month, almost experiment on a certain day of the week, we don't know what, where food trucks would be around Snyder Park. And Snyder Park, of course, has restrooms and has picnic area and so forth. And we don't know what we don't know. And so, we're moving forward slowly on the food truck ordinance to see if we can make it work with as few complaints as possible. But that's, that's my report on this one. Okay, good and welfare, is there anything else? Would anybody like to comment on the reports that we just gave? I'm sorry. Okay?
I was just going to mention, remind everybody, we have a finance committee meeting next week on the 21st.
Here?
Here, at 3:30. And we're also, if you're interested, we're also working on maybe meeting for the special, for the Measure K.
We are probably going to be meeting next month for Measure K for the first time, because I am having difficulties getting everybody's calendars to line up and get that sweet date. So...
For all of you interested in Measure K, we have a lot of information shared.
Another doodle poll went out, so please check it and let me know what days you're available.
As far as closed session, that was canceled?
Yes. Our attorneys, who've been hired by the city's insurance pool, are planning to give a presentation to the council on this, now, based on some events that happened yesterday at the central conference. They'd like to postpone that for a week or more.
Okay.
I do have a good and welfare bill.
Okay, and then, go ahead.
I am driving down to Fresno tomorrow to watch my son graduate from Fresno State, who is graduating soon. Will do great, and he did an amazing job. He is majoring in public relations, media relations, and journalism.
And he's a local Willets boy. John?
What will the announcement be for your ad hoc committee meeting? For the, will you be on?
The ad hoc committee is, we just meet with planning and building. There's not public announcements on that, it's just a city meeting.
I think you're talking about the stakeholder meeting.
Oh, the stakeholder meeting, I'm sorry. So, that would come from the planning department?
Mayor, so the stakeholder meeting we talked about, the ad hoc committee, was specific to the neighborhood around Bud Snyder Park to get their input on, on setting that up. We could, we didn't talk about having, although we likely will, having further stakeholder meetings with other segments, including the business community. So, possibly I'm wrong, but the stakeholder meeting that was referenced was specific for the neighbors around the park.
Okay, thank you. You'll be in touch of all the other meetings, absolutely, John.
And I know to keep you in the loop on things that we do.
Okay. Anything else? Well, it is only 7:50, and this meeting is over. Thank you, thanks for attending.